Well done. Welcome to the November 24, 2020, 6:30 City Council meeting. We do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you read the procedures for public comment?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Then for individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions and requests, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. And all comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on agenda items. And finally, citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes, regardless of the number of items identified.
All right. Thank you very much. We have no minutes to approve at this meeting, so City Manager, would you do special recognition?
Yes, sir, and Council, welcome. And I'd like to make an agenda item change if we could. I'd like to move the Employee of the Month to New Business, so Mr. Galindo could sit throughout the complete meeting.
Okay.
No, sir. We're really proud to recognize Mr. Eddie Galindo from our Plan Department as Titusville City Employee of the Month for August 2020. And Peggy Bousaka will come up and read the citation for Eddie. And unfortunately, Lori Dargy's on vacation. She is the Employee of the Month for September 2020. We'll get her later.
This nomination was made by Joelyn Donhoff as the co-lea-son to the city's advisory council, so this wasn't from our department. And the nomination reads in part that Eddie Galindo should be nominated for Employee of the Month for his valuable time, knowledge, and commitment outside of his normal scope of work to support the city's Students Administrative Council. The project was a planning and executing a city to create a model city. And Mr. Galindo reviewed the various land use designations for the participants, and he gave each one of them, each group, a large map with a model city, which had some kind of unique feature, such as a historic battlefield and airport, something that they had to work around. And then he provided each of them with a series of card stocks and said, here, you can have a certain amount of residential, a certain amount of industrial, and they had to create their model city based on these different land uses. The seminar was a huge success, and the student advisory council staff and several guests reflected on the seminar feeling that Mr. Galindo's professional presentation and teaching abilities with the seminar's guests were hugely responsible for the seminar's success. Mr. Galindo presented information in an energizing but professional way and made the hands-on learning activity fun and memorable. When Eddie joined our group, I knew that he was special the first time that he came to the city picnic, and he was wearing a coconut bra. Now, that didn't necessarily make him unusual, but what I liked about it is when I said to him, Eddie, where'd you get the coconut bra? And he said, from my closet. So anyone who actually owns one of those is indeed... But Eddie is a very valued employee, and we are glad to see him recognized.
That's awesome.
So Mayor, if I could have you come down and present the certificate to Mr. Galindo.
Certainly, we thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
The city appreciates, so I guess we should get this in here.
Say, you want to get that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much. You did some great things, and you need to...
And Mr. Galindo, you have to limit your speech to three minutes, please.
All right.
Yes, sir, Mayor, and Council, the next agenda item is Agenda Item 5B, which are letters of appreciations that were received for our employees this month, and from Community Development, Navio Alfonte, Mark Jones, from the Fire Department, Kerry Lubinski, from Community Relations and Media Services, Shane Daly, Curtis Corwin, and Will Petty, and from the Water Resources Department, Maureen Phillips.
Thank you. And you want to move to Boards and Commissions?
Boards and Commission 6A, the Titusville Environmental Commission. The term of alternate member Laura Lee Thompson expires on November 30, 2020. Ms. Thompson has expressed her willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board and has requested reappointment for another three-year term to expire on November 30, 2023. There are currently no other applications on file for your consideration.
So in this case, we'd make the move and formally nominate her, et cetera?
Yes, sir.
All right, before we do that, I would like to interject that I just attended a seminar, online seminar, that she put on, oh, I think it was Wednesday of last week. It was absolutely amazing. I was telling City Manager she needs to write a book. She goes on not only about her life, but everything that went on here. I did not know so much about her. For example, as you know all these things, her father owned the longest free pier in the world, which was our pier till the hurricanes ate it up. And she talked about how they used to catch blowfish and run down the pier and kick them in. I used to do that. And how all the men here, and it was a little chauvinistic, I guess, except for her and probably you, would have their nets and their lanterns ready for the shrimp runs. And my dad did the same thing, and we're over in Imperial Estates, and he'd get a call at 2:00 in the morning, and he's gone, and comes back at 8:00 in the morning, and hundreds of shrimp. So she just did a tremendous job, and cannot be a higher asset for us on this commission. So I will take a nomination for her.
I would like to make that nomination.
We have the nomination from Vice Mayor.
Second.
And second from Member Jordan. Roll call vote, please.
Excuse me, sir, we do have a poll of speaking.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. I'll get better at that part, Stan. Roll fast here.
Quick, Stan Johnson, 860 Point Center Avenue. You're doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any more cards?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. We're ready for the roll call vote.
Okay. Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Next item for Council is petitions and requests from the public present on non-agenda items.
And you have cards for that? Clerk, no need that? Okay. Thank you. I knew that this morning.
You've seen this. Stan Johnson, 860 Point Center Avenue. This is changed. Of course, I had to make some revisions. Ex-Mayor, Mayor Diesel, so forth. I'm speaking to you about an email that I sent, a copy to everybody. It says to Mr. Diesel, and I read to you today the ending part where it says, it's time to get rid of some garbage. And that's the main thing here, because right now what we have is we have a situation about truth. We have a problem about all these items here, democracy, missing records, auditors, $65 million is not being recognized, just a number of things. So on this other sign, I have 21 months of lies. And that's what has to do with this up here. It says, no $70,000 report, no contract that has been certainly pushed by our ex-mayor and our shyster city manager here. And that's where I wanted you to get rid of the garbage. Let's get rid of the shyster city manager. In this case, is there's, this $70,000 report, no contract disagrees with what all our employees are saying. So how can people work for the city of Titusville and have the council and the city manager saying, hey, you're lying? Or the other case is, is that let's suppose you are lying, and the city manager says, you're going to get promoted because you lie. You're going to say, and he's not going to say it that way. He said, I like your opinions. You look forward to a promotion. And so the question is, what's going to happen in human resources? When you want to hire somebody, you're going to hire somebody that's going to just lie? Mr. Jordan is having some difficulty right now. He's got his engineering company, and it's got a cease and desist order on it. So he's reworded his site, his website, as being this engineer with this exotic, numerous engineering potentials and so forth. So anyhow, in this particular case, I'm saying is that these departments, finance departments, purchasing, contracting, media department, city clerks, all of them, so forth, they disagree. They can't find the $70,000 report. They can't find the contract. They can't find the invoice paying $70,000. GeoSynTech, GeoSynTech says they never did it, and it continues. The $70,000 report says, I'm just...
And that's the...
Do I have two more minutes?
I'm not seeing any motion. No, sir. Thank you.
And on to Consent Agenda. Council, is there any council members that wish to pull any of the agenda items from Consent A through F? Clerk, are there any cards for Consent Agenda?
Yes, sir. One individual has submitted six cards for consent.
Okay.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
We talked about on C, Item C, changing or tying that to the end of the state of emergency. Did we do that? My screen's not coming out. Sorry.
Correct. The resolution on Item 8C, which has to do with establishing procedures for conducting city public meetings, as drafted, provides that it'll expire upon rescension by council, which would require another action.
Right.
But certainly, it could be tied to the state of emergency.
Okay.
So if that's your direction, we can clarify that that would expire along with the governor's executive order that established the state of emergency. It would not come back to you. If you're desire, we will tie these procedures to the state of emergency.
So I need to go ahead and pull that.
And/or, you know, the city and county are both under states of emergency as well. So you could tie it to your state of emergency if you wish.
Sure. Council could just, in your motion to approve, whoever does motion approve could say, and have an expiration date of 8C to coincide with the state of emergency.
Okay.
Okay, sir.
And Mayor and Council, with your permission, I'll read for the record Consent Agenda Items A through F. Consent Agenda Item 8A, approve the FY 2020 year-end budget adjustment. Consent Agenda Item 8B, approve the renewal of the Highway Maintenance Agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation. Consent Agenda Item 8C, approve Resolution 362020 establishing procedures for conducting city public meetings during the declared state of emergency as a result of COVID-19. Consent Agenda Item 8D, approve the use of Bovard County Roofing Contract Services, P21413, in the amount of $25,770 for roof repair replacements at the City Marina Tech Systems Incorporated of Melbourne, Florida. Consent Agenda Item 8E, approve Resolution 372020 appointing Deborah Babnucker, Babnutcher, and Law Firm of Gargancy Weiss and DeResta and Salzman, PA, as the Code Enforcement Special Magistrate and approve the attached agreement for Special Magistrate Code Enforcement Services. Consent Agenda Item 8F, approve Resolution 382020 approving the temporary closure of State Road US-1 for the downtown Christmas party and geared up ride it down to trail ride on December 11, 2020.
Okay, thank you. So we call the cards?
Yes, sir. Stan Johnston, again, submitted for six items.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Center Avenue. Thank you for this opportunity to address you on some items. There's some items I have approved. I should maybe mention those first. And that is 8B, FDOT Maintenance Agreement. And 8F is the US-1 closure. Now, I'm opposing four items, 8A, 8C, 8E. One, two, three. That's three, not four. And let me go explain to you about some of these objections I'm having. On 8C is that has to do with your... It says, conducting city public meetings. Well, maybe I'm wrong, but I think it says council meetings. And it excludes P&amp;Z and TEC. Am I wrong? If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. Okay? So because I thought that's the way I read it when I read it, it said like council meetings, but I could be wrong.
As stated, it says city council and other city boards.
Okay, other, okay. All right, that's good. Now, I think what it should mention is that the people who are attending the meeting should be able to hear the words that are spoken, you know, from here, from this, and from these other microphones. I think I would like that to be put in there specifically, because on April 28, I came to this meeting, my wife came to this meeting, and my son came to this meeting. We sat downstairs. I don't know if we heard it as much as one sentence, understood one sentence, the whole time we were there. My wife and son were there for over two hours. That's a problem. So although you had Frank Abadi, not Frank, but his brother, Mr. Abadi, and other people say that we could hear down there, well, we couldn't. So I think that should be something that should be required. I talked to my attorney and said, well, you know what? The way the courts go, they don't care. And so don't even sue it. Don't even pursue it. So that's on that. On the special magistrate is the question is, what the heck's going on? I mean, you know, for years now, we haven't had a special magistrate. Now, so the comment is that this particular one is going to be, the strategic plan is for efficient and effective services. Well, we haven't had this magistrate for all these years. This is the first time I know that we were going to do it. And we've had people that have been handling it. And now this guy's going to charge $175 an hour for hearing time. So I asked myself the question is, so it looks like to me is what we're going to do is take the burden off our legal department, and we're going to pay more. We're just going to pay more. So I don't think it's, I doubt that it's effective, efficient, and I see that, hey, it's entering a temptation for some people to be conniving and dishonest and so forth in their presentations and so forth, when you have somebody from outside listen to these people that come forward and presenting their cases, and they don't really know what's going on in the city as much as people who are, if we have a committee. So I'm very much against 8E. And it just seems like it was just a brainchild of our shyster city manager. And so, hey, where do we go with that? On fiscal year 2020, end-of-year adjustments, I'm against that, and I'll have to look at my notes why I'm against that. Oh, my goodness. Here's what it has. It has an expenditure which is, which doesn't represent the expenditure. Here's the expenditures. It says, general fund, fire, emergency services, overtime exceeded, and we're paying $135,841. That's the city's cost. Well, we know that's not true. We know that's not true, because we have OPEB right now that is accelerating on all of our wages, and it's at $65 million, was back in April of this year. So this report on this agenda item is a misrepresentation of the truth, just as our city council and our city manager misrepresent the truth, big time, because right now is the city is not balancing the budget at all. It's deficit spending. So this particular agenda item misrepresent what the truth is. It's not an expense of $135,841. It doesn't include OPEB at all. I don't see it, and you won't see it. So what we're doing is that it's another misrepresentation. I think you should either table it or just do something else with it. But you need to have truthful representation. That's what's going on with the city of Titusville. It's not true, just like it's no true about the report about me. Doesn't exist. So that's another reason for... Now, we have, let me go to another item. I might have to come back to that. I approved 8C. Let's go to 8C. 8C is the resolution establishing procedure for Dunkin' City. I went over that. Okay, I went over 8C. Let's go over to another one. Eight, eight...
B.
B. That was approved. I already approved that. So let me go a little bit more into this general fund thing, because I have a little bit of time. So what the city needs to do is to be truthful in its representation, because what happened on April 28 is what I'm talking about, is when the auditor came. The auditor came and said, the city has a problem, $65 million. And what Mrs. Stokel said at that meeting is surprising. Same thing is surprising what our attorney Nelson said and our engineer Jordan said. It was unbelievable what they had to say about it. So they closed that, and I had a speaking card for that particular agenda item when the $65 million came up. So what do you think I said? I said the same thing that Mr. Jordan and these other people said. I said absolutely nothing. Why did I say nothing? Because it was whipped around, concocted, so that the mayor said, hey, here's what he said. He said, if you have any comments about this auditor's report, please send an email to our city manager. So no one spoke except our mayor Johnson on that $65 million. No one spoke, and no one objected. No council member objected, and it went sailing through, and I didn't even have an opportunity to speak because there was no decision made to accept the report, no review of it whatsoever. So what did I do? I went ahead and I asked for requests for records. What the heck did Sarah and Joelyn and Robert Jordan, what do they have to ask the city manager about this incredible thing that's saying, we're deficit spending? We're in the pits. In fact, as you remember, there was a 27-minute discussion on bankruptcy back in 2018. So what do you think emails that I got from records? Well, from Joelyn Nelson, got nothing. From Sarah Stokel, Dr. Stokel, got nothing. From engineer Jordan, not one email. So everybody was fine to just keep their mouth shut. And this is what it has an appearance of. This appears to be, how in the world this could not be some kind of circumvention of the sunshine law? I just don't see it any other way. Yes, sir.
I was really following you really good, and then all of a sudden, I don't see where you're at. And I know you're kind of trying to relate it from over here at the time. But I'm even looking, I literally was thinking, man, he's really staying on this stuff.
Yes.
Did you talk about D, roof repairs?
No, I didn't. I didn't.
So I'd like you to talk about roof repairs.
Okay, I can do that.
And you were doing a really good job.
I couldn't do that.
Consent Agenda items, and that's what I hope we can do here.
Okay.
And then you went everywhere.
Okay.
All right, let's go to D, and then we'll conclude. Clock, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
On 8D... On eight D is that I put neutral on that. And the reason I put, I think it's called neutral, is that, is that we've had roof repairs with, I believe this is not city hall, this is the Marina building, I think. And it, it, it went up, oh, we're out of time?
Thirty more seconds, can we do that?
Thirty more seconds?
Can you finish D, thirty seconds?
I was just, I just had a concern.
Wait, I forgot, I've got it. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have a motion for thirty more seconds. Do I have a second? Thank you, sir. All those in favor? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, you're generous. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll wait, I'll wait till she gets ready.
And you're on D.
I'm on D.
She might give you thirty minutes away, it's going over there.
Oh, golly.
You good? All right, good, thanks, sir, go.
Thank you, thank you very much, okay. So, so that pretty much ends the D, but I do have a comment that what's coming up this evening is a special thing for you. Is this a special thing for you to be able to sue me for slander and libel? That's going to be coming, and when we get to 10A. So look forward to that. It's an open opportunity for the city to sue me for slander and libel. So thank you very much.
Thirty seconds for that, come on, man.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. Where was I? City manager.
We're ready for a vote.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
I'm sorry, go ahead, I, I.
One question on the roof. I know the contract has been written, but I noticed the other night that the, the wage is not in compliance with state law for the salary of the employees of the contractor.
Which item, sir?
On the roof.
That's D.
Oh, on the roof, okay, on D.
On D.
Yeah, we're piggybacking the school board contract, so we'll check with our purchasing department tomorrow. But we use tech systems on the city facilities a few months ago, and it was approved at that point. But we'll, we'll backtrack and make sure it's still an active school board contract, but it was as of writing the agenda item.
Even if it's approved a couple of months ago, the wages was still below then, because it says that for the laborers, they're only paying $1,825, and that's been a long time ago.
But this isn't a, this isn't a federal contract, so their wage rates are what, they're stipulating wage rates to the school board, we're, we're taking those wage rates to our contract. Davis Bacon only comes into effect on federal contracts, so they're, they're allowed to pay a market wage. But again, I'll go back through with legal and purchasing to make sure the contract is acceptable to continue using, but we do piggyback before our school board for our use of our roofing systems.
All right, just, we look into it, and I'm fine with that.
Yep. Can we move forward as he looks into that?
Sure.
Okay. All right, do I have approval for consent agenda? Any more questions from the council question or comments from the council on the consent agenda? Yes, sir, Mr. Member Jordan.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just need to understand what the vice mayor was asking about. I got confused with what she was looking for.
On item C.
Yes.
The way it's written, they would have to come back before us and ask us to rescind it.
All right.
If we tie it to, say, the county's emergency, state of emergency order, then once that goes away, the ordinance goes away without it coming back to us.
And sir, if you, if you are the motion maker, if you could make it specific to which state of emergency, because there are three currently in place, there's a state, state of emergency, the, the county has a state of emergency, and the city is also under state of emergency.
Okay.
Good to see.
Which is the most stringent?
Each has different powers.
Right.
But I, I would recommend going with the, the city's state of emergency.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, yeah, we're good with that.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, Member Stokel, you good? Everybody's going away.
So.
Okay, because there's, there's some up here that I'm sure just sitting there, is there anybody else needs to speak on this?
I don't want to make the motion.
Well, then, when you get done, hit that button so your name's not still up here. There you go, thank you, sir. Okay, Member Jordan.
Okay, I drafted it.
Yes, sir. You were already speaking.
All right, Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve consent agenda items A through F, and with A, C coincide with the state of emergency, emergency for the city.
And we have a motion, Member Jordan.
Second.
We have a second from Member Stokel. Roll call vote. Take your time. We won't pass today.
Uh, Member Jordan.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Onto ordinances, second reading, public hearings, and related actions. This is agenda item 9A, ordinance 232020 related to home-based businesses, and the city attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 232020, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances, chapter 28 zoning, section 28 dash 360 home-based business by amending the list of home-based businesses permitted and prohibited within residential areas, by permitting certain home-based businesses to have clients on site, by establishing conditions under which such businesses may operate, and by clarifying terminology, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances for an effective date and for incorporation into the code.
On November 4th, 2020, the planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval of option three, expand home-based businesses as a limited uses by allowing clients in homes with expression of concerns regarding hours of operation, full-time versus part-time, types and uses allowed, code enforcement concerns, regulations of chemicals, auxiliary buildings, and commercial competition. In response to a citizen's request on September 22nd, 2020, city council directed staff to come back with a report with options relating to amending the code for home-based businesses for city council to review. After review of the staff report on October 13th, 2020, council directed staff to draft an ordinance expanding home-based businesses to allow clients for in-home selected businesses. A copy of that staff report outlining the enforcement concerns and options to address home-based businesses is attached in your packet. Pursuant to council's direction, the proposed ordinance includes the following. In addition to the current list of uses that are not permitted as home-based businesses and businesses which are not permitted to have clients in the home, the ordinance provides a list of home-based businesses which permits clients in residence. Limitations for home-based businesses which do not include client visits to residents have been expanded. These portions of paragraph 4A and 4J are highlighted. The remainder of section four is underlined because it has been moved and language remains the same. Section five provides the limitations for home-based businesses for which clients are permitted on-site. Section six amends the list of prohibited uses to remove beauty salons and barber hair styling shops and add taxidermy. Sections nine through 11 are additional languages relating to renewal, revocation, and enforcement of home-based businesses. Section 12, which states that the administrator may be required, any home, may require any home businesses to obtain a CUP based upon proposed use of any site, specific factor has been deleted per city council's discussion on November 10th, 2020. Ms. Busak is available to answer questions that you may have concerning this item, and I believe they will have a card.
Correct. Ms. Busak, is there anything from staff?
Only to mention that the P and Z also mentioned that they had concerns about hours of operation, full-time versus part-time, so that that was part of all of the concerns that they had listed. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, very good. Do we have card?
Yes, sir, one card, Deidra Haines Waller.
Hi, how are you?
Good evening, everyone. Yes.
Hey, name and address, please.
Deidra Haines Waller, address is 1105 Wedgewood Lane, Titusville.
Anything you want to add, or you just want to kind of answer questions, or where you at?
Just want to say about the operations, I don't know if I have anything to do with that part of it, but mine would be part-time. So I don't know if that would have anything to do with what she's, what is there on the table for tonight.
Okay, council, any questions for speaker or staff? I'm looking, member, I'm going to go with Member Stokel.
Yeah, my, in relation to that, mine would be for Peggy, if she has any recommendations on part-time versus full-time.
Could you start with an easier question?
I know.
The, I think any hours of operation are going to be difficult to enforce. So we can have them in the code, and of course, if there are complaints, the code enforcement will do their very best to enforce them, but I, sort of sitting and watching what happens to a specific residence for most of the week, I'm not sure how you would enforce it.
What's your feeling about not listing hours of operation at all?
I think that hours of operation in the ordinance allows you, in the event that there is a very obvious and egregious issue, if someone calls and says, this business always operates from midnight till 2:00 in the morning, I think that that's an opportunity for code enforcement to go out there and observe that at a time which is not appropriate. So I, I think there's an advantage to that, but I just think when you start to say full time versus part-time, it's very difficult to enforce.
Okay. All right, that, yeah, and kind of with that, just looking at the hours of operation, I feel like that gives us some guidance, and if somebody wants to do it full-time during that time or part-time during that time, I say let them, and then if we do have an issue, I think we're protected already in this ordinance to address it at that time. So I'd like to give them that flexibility to do what they want.
Very good. Member Jordan.
I don't even know where to start, because, what are you laughing at? I, I guess my, my biggest concern is code enforcement is going to be difficult at best when you're dealing with any of this stuff. Like, you know, one neighborhood may be fine with what's going on, and, and everybody is doing what they're supposed to, and then you have another neighborhood that someone is going to push the, the limit. And from what I've seen in my life, when someone's complaining about another neighbor, it takes years before anything really happens to that person, and by that time, somebody decides to move. So, you know, I'm, I'm just a little concerned. I know what we're trying to do here, and we certainly want to help our citizens out, but I just think that we're putting our code enforcement in a very precarious position, and citizens are going to be pretty frustrated with us when we can't really do much. And I think we talked one time about if money, if we don't see money changing hands, then there's a challenge there too for code enforcement. There's not much they can, they can do about it. So I have reservations for this, I certainly support what, what you want to do, but I just have reservations for the global thing we're trying to do, and I think we might create a bigger problem than what is worth, just my opinion.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Well, if memory service being right, we had a clause in there that if there were problems, that we could do something when somebody went to look for the business tax receipt each year.
That's correct. It's on the bottom of page 87 of your agenda item. And it says each home-based business license will be reviewed and renewed annually concurrently with the renewal of the business tax receipt. It goes on to say that it's, the business tax receipt shall not be deemed to vest or otherwise entitle the licensee, and then it states that the city council can decide then that this is not in character based on code enforcement issues. So there is, there is a way to deal with this if code enforcement finds something or we get a significant number of complaints, we can bring those to you, and you'll have the opportunity to reconsider whether this is appropriate in that particular location.
So I think we're protected in that sense, we can do something. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
As long as we have an out, if we need it.
All right, before I move your direction, I want to add that we have an out. I think that anytime we have that, I want to give an opportunity where if things don't work out, not with you so much, but perhaps someone else, we, we have an out, and it's nice to have that. But this also reminds me of a couple of years ago when we went through the whole chicken debate. And, and there, there was, should we have chickens, shouldn't we have chickens? And the same exact concern was there, some people might do well with chickens, and then some people might not take care of them. My feeling then, and it is now, and I think it stands, if you had chickens, you were going to take care of them, and just because we suddenly had an ordinance that allowed it, weren't going to be a whole bunch of new chicken people. I don't think there's going to be a whole bunch of new private sector business people simply because we have an ordinance that allows them to do what they're doing. So we have had, to my knowledge, no issue with chickens. I don't think we're going to have any issue with this any further than we are now. I think you make a good point. I was nodding when you're saying, saying, yeah, that's, that's a concern. But I'd like to move forward with it, and we have an out, and I don't think it's going to be an issue. Member Jordan.
I, my, I guess the biggest concern that I have is a fact that what you just said, Ms. Busak, and that was that when we have significant number of code enforcement violation, what is that significant number? You know, she may have five or 10, somebody else may have 25. How do you balance that? Because you, you really have to make sure we're treating everybody well, you know, when you do that. So I, I'm just not.
The, what the, what the ordinance says is that it is evidenced by a finding of the code enforcement board or special magistrate that the, that they have not come into compliance when they were allowed to, you know, told to do so. So if someone were to be given a week or 10 days or whatever it is that code enforcement would give them to come into compliance, and they did not do that, and there was a finding by the special magistrate that this was an issue, at that point, we would bring it to you. Now, it, there may be several complaints that they people immediately fix, often they don't realize that they're in violation. I just have one other comment, and I don't know whether this will make you feel any better or not, but we have only expanded this for the following types of businesses. Beauticians, barbers, and nail technicians, private lessons such as piano or swimming lessons, and professional offices for architects, engineers, attorneys, interior designers, accountants, finance, and security investments. Those are the only three uses or types of uses that we have expanded this for, in the home. And frankly, if we have a raucous accountant, we all probably want to know about it anyway.
I guess my, my last comment, and I understand what you're saying, my last comment is that we do have a lot of businesses out there that don't, that don't have BTRs. Correct. So I, I'm not sure this is going to expand or contract what's out there, but I guess we got an ordinance, so, thank you.
Any other questions for the speaker? No? Okay, you're good, thank you.
Thank you all.
Any other cards?
Yes, sir.
All right, do I have a motion to approve 9A?
I'd move to approve ordinance number 232020 related to home-based businesses.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Member Stokel, and we need a roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Oh, I forget, I'm, I'm the guy now. I was enjoying that.
I know you were.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously, thank you very much, thank you very much. 9B.
Onto 9B, which is ordinance 242020 regarding mobile vendors in public PE zoning. City attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 242020, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances to clarify application requirements for mobile vendors and to permit mobile vendors and specialty vent vendors on land zoned public under certain conditions by amending chapter 11 licenses and business regulations, specifically amending sections 11 dash 332 mobile vendors and 11 dash 340 specialty vent vendors, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances for an effective date, and for incorporation into the code.
On November 4th, 2020, the planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval of the ordinance as written. On March 10th, 2020, a citizen requested that the city consider amending the code to allow mobile vendors to be permitted within the public zoning categories. The intent of the request was to allow mobile vendors to locate at Space Coast Regional Airport. The proposed ordinance would The proposed ordinance would permit mobile vendors within the Space Coast Regional Airport Development Waiver Zone based on written confirmation from the Tyco Airport Authority that the location will not have an adverse impact to aviation operations. The ordinance has been reviewed by the Chief Executive Officer of Tyco Airport Authority, who supports the language. The boundaries of the Space Coast Regional Airport Development Waiver Zone are contiguous with the boundaries of the airport.
Okay. Staff, you have any input there? Counsel, questions or input? I see no lights. Do we have any cards on this item?
Uh, yes, sir.
Do we wanna have a motion here, please? Go ahead, Member Jordan.
I make the motion.
Okay. Uh, Member Jordan, please.
Thank you. I move that we approve ordinance number twenty-four twenty regarding mobile vendors in public zoning.
And a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes. Nine B, motion passes unanimously. We're on to nine C.
On to C, ordinance twenty-five twenty-twenty correcting discrepancies in the zoning code use tables' primary uses, and the City Attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance number twenty-five twenty-twenty. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter twenty-eight zoning to correct omissions and inconsistencies between permitted, conditional, and limited uses in Article five Use Standards and Article four Use Table, specifically amending sections twenty-eight dash fifty-four Use Table, twenty-eight dash seventy-three A Live/Work Unit, twenty-eight dash seventy-eight A Residential/Professional Use, twenty-eight dash eighty-one A Town Homes, twenty-eight ninety-three A Animal Shelter, twenty-eight dash ninety-nine A Bakery/Retail, twenty-eight dash one oh one Bed and Breakfast Ends, twenty-eight dash one eleven A Clothing and Shoe Stores, twenty-eight dash one seventeen A Drinking Establishments Bar/Tavern/Lounge, twenty-eight dash one eighteen A Dry Cleaner, twenty-eight dash one twenty-two A Financial Institutions, twenty-eight dash one twenty-five A Funeral Establishment Without Quirumatory, twenty-eight dash one twenty-six A Furniture Store, twenty-eight dash one nine, twenty-nine C Grocery Store, twenty-eight dash one thirty-one A Hospitals, twenty-eight dash one thirty-two A Hotel/Motel, twenty-eight dash one thirty-eight A Laundromat, twenty-eight dash one fifty-one Outdoor Storage, twenty-eight dash one fifty-two A Package and Parcel Delivery Services, twenty-eight dash one fifty-six A Personal Services, twenty-eight dash one sixty-one A Postal and Mailing Services, twenty-eight dash one sixty-five A Radio and Television Sales, twenty-eight dash one sixty-six A Repair and Service for Small Equipment Items, twenty-eight dash one seventy-one A Shoe Repair, twenty-eight dash one seventy-six A Transit Accommodations, twenty-eight dash one eighty-one A Veterinarian, twenty-eight dash two oh one A Bakeries and Confectionaries, twenty-eight dash two oh two A Bottling Plants, twenty-eight dash two oh nine A Laboratory Research and Testing, twenty-eight dash two ten A Light Manufacturing, twenty-eight dash two eighteen A Retail or Wholesale of Products Manufactured on Site, twenty-eight dash twenty-two twenty Transmission Tower, twenty-eight dash two twenty-two A Warehousing/Wholesale, twenty-eight dash two twenty-three Welding, Metalworking/Fabrication, twenty-eight dash two thirty-one A Airpark, twenty-eight dash two thirty-two A Airport, twenty-eight dash two thirty-six A Church, twenty-eight dash two thirty-eight A Community Centers, twenty-eight dash two thirty-nine Community Service, twenty-eight dash two forty-two A Family Daycare Homes, twenty-eight dash two forty-eight A Nursing Homes, Convalescent Homes, and Extended Care Facilities, twenty-eight dash two forty-nine A Passenger Terminal Facilities, twenty-eight dash two fifty-three A Public Utility, twenty-eight dash two fifty-five A Schools, Public or Private, twenty-eight dash two fifty-six A Vocational School, twenty-eight dash two seventy-two A Golf Course, twenty-eight dash two seventy-four A Park, Public or Nonprofit, twenty-eight dash two seventy-five A Recreation and Commercial Amusement Indoor, and twenty-eight dash two seventy-six A Recreation and Commercial Amusement Outdoor, Providing for Severability, Repeal of Conflicting Ordinances and Effective Date, and Incorporation into the Code.
This is the first reading and first public hearing. The second reading and second public hearing is scheduled to be heard by City Council on December eighth, twenty-twenty, at six-thirty. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval as written. Ms. Busaka is available to answer questions Counsel may have concerning this first reading.
First of all, City Attorney, I thought the clock was gonna run out on you on that one. Uh, Ms. Busaka, any comments on that, Counsel? All right, we can move on to the next agenda item. Nine D.
On to nine D. This is ordinance twenty-six.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Clerk?
Um, excuse me, sir. We did get a card on nine C.
Okay. First reading, nine C. We're good. Uh, come on up. Okay, we have a pass on the card, and when, now we move to nine D.
Nine D is ordinance twenty-six twenty-twenty correcting discrepancies in the zoning code use tables' accessory uses, and the City Attorney will read the, uh, ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number twenty-six twenty-twenty. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter twenty-eight zoning to correct permitted, conditional, and limited uses in Article eight Accessory Use Standards, to be consistent with Article seven Accessory Use Table, specifically amending sections twenty-eight dash three forty-two Accessory Use Table, twenty-eight dash three fifty-one Accessory Dwelling Unit, twenty-eight dash three fifty-three Attached Screened Porch, twenty-eight dash three fifty-six Clubhouse, twenty-eight dash three sixty-three Outdoor Display of Merchandise, twenty-eight dash three sixty-seven Recreation Court, twenty-eight dash three seventy Screen Enclosures with Screened Roof, including Pool Enclosures, and twenty-eight dash three seventy-three Temporary Storage Units, Providing for Severability, Repeal of Conflicting Ordinances and Effective Date, and Incorporation into the Code.
This is the first reading and first public hearing. The second reading and second public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by City Council at its regular meeting on December eighth, twenty-twenty, at six-thirty. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval as written. Ms. Busaka is available to answer questions Counsel may have on this, your first reading.
And Ms. Busaka, anything you wanna add? Counsel, anything you wanna ask? Do we have cards?
Uh, yes, sir. One card. Dan Johnston.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we move on to the next agenda item, which is ten A.
Ten A is the, uh, ordinance twenty-seven twenty-twenty Capital Improvements Annual Update. This is the first reading, and the City Attorney will read for the record.
Ordinance number twenty-seven twenty-twenty. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville for the twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-five horizon relating to the capital improvement element and providing for an effective date.
This is the first reading, the, uh, first public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by the City Council on December eighth, twenty-twenty, beginning at six-thirty PM. Ms. Busaka.
Ms. Busaka, anything to add on this one? Counsel, anything to ask? And cards?
Uh, yes, sir. One card. Dan Johnston.
Okay. Please come up, Mr. Johnston.
Stan Johnston, professional engineer. This ten A capital improvement, now, it's got some big problems, and I'd like to, I bring about, I don't know if I can, you'll have, I'll have time to go over three of them, but, uh, one of them, um, has to do with, um, the two-point-five-foot rise in sea level. So, we're gonna adopt this, it's, it, to two thousand seventy or two thousand eighty, that there's gonna be a two-foot, point-five-foot rise in sea level. So, we're gonna be telling the public that, too. Have you gotta be kidding? And it says that they did some calculations on that. So, our planning department, the question I have is, you see, I worked for government for years. I worked for Brevard County for about ten years, and when I did some things, what I would do is that, uh, I would go through other departments to see what they had, input they have on things. So, my question is, is how in the world? Does FEMA know about this? Does our flood plan manager, uh, KB, does he know about this? Does, uh, uh, does our stormwater know about this? Does our building department, have they, have they been reviewed on this, two-point-five So, uh, I, I just wonder what in the world, because I went to the, I went to all these meetings they had about the rise in sea level, and they, they had opportunities to, to give the, that, uh, how much rise it's gonna be, and they never did. So, I was in on that resilient Titusville report. In fact, is, is that, uh, what I have is I have a complaint about Brad Parish and Eddie Galindo is what they did on, they did the, Brad did this report that we're looking at right now, and I'm complaining about Brad, and I, I don't know, I guess I have to drop it because, because of, uh, our city manager. Mr. Diesel had a, uh, his mother-in-law was, house was, uh, in a flood zone for many, many years because of, uh, Mr., uh, Stauffer and Mr. Rice. They lied. They lied and lied. And so, finally, they, finally, they went ahead and sent it to FEMA, took it out. It's a flood zone. I knew it was wrong. They knew it was wrong. Didn't have any, so, so anyhow, in this particular case, is water flows downhill, and I gave them many reports to, uh, to, to Mr. Parish, Mr. Galindo, and the East Central Florida Regional Plan Council. I gave them the reports, just like this, uh, gross negligence report that I signed and sealed. I had fifteen pages or so. Nothing was reported. Nothing was reported in resilient Titusville. So, it was very unethical and, uh, unprofessional.
Any comments up, sir?
I'd like to have two more minutes at least to let you know what's going on, so maybe you can sue me.
Motion? Any motion?
Okay, no.
I see no motion, sir.
I'm sure Mr. Jordan wouldn't want that.
We're good. Thank you, sir.
And again, this is, uh, first reading, Counsel.
And we move on to old business.
Well, I just wanted to point out, the report states sea level ri, estimated sea level rise of two-point-five feet by the years twenty-seventy and twenty-eighty. I didn't know if I'd heard the speaker say two thousand seventy-eight. I just wanted to clarify the point.
That's good clarification.
It's two thousand se, twenty-seventy and twenty, or twenty-eighty.
That's right. There's a good chance Mr. Jordan and I won't be here for that.
I'm not positive what the speaker said, but I just, I'm, I was wanting to clarify.
I appreciate the clarification.
Twenty-seven, it says twenty-seven.
Yes, sir. On to, uh, new business is, uh, annually, the City Council appointments to serve on outside agencies are updated. Members of City Council are appointed to serve on various outside agencies to represent the interests of the citizens of the City of Titusville, and you have a hard copy of the current appointments at your station, and, uh, sir, I'll open it up for your discussion on the assignments.
I would like to open it up to the Counsel for discussion before I even put anything in here. The only thing I would say, I'm on the Parks and Recreation Board. I don't, I, I would think that Jeff Davis and that board, and I have actually talked to them, would agree, there's, uh, there's no reason to switch if we don't have to switch. Uh, we've gotten an awful lot of things done through their fine efforts, um, and I'd like to stay there. Um, I'm sure there's some others who are gonna speak up that would like to stay where they're at and will go from there. So, what I have now is Member Jordan.
Thank you very much. I've been studying this hard and see if I can take some of the pressure off of me, but I don't know if I can or not. Um, I'm on the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization. I think I'd like to, uh, stay on there. The times are wrong that we have on there, though. We normally meet around one o'clock, um, not nine or twelve o'clock. We, we've never done that, so that needs to, to be changed. My first suggestion, so, um, it's supposed to be two of us, and as you notice, um, ex-mayor used to be the primary along with myself. We had two primaries.
I see that.
And, and both of those are voting, too.
Yeah, and both voting, so we need to have another, um, person besides myself on that. Um, and then also, um, on the North Brevard Economic Development Zone, I like to be the primary on that now since the mayor is gone. And everything else, I'm fine with.
Do you have any input on that?
Um, the, the mayors, the past several mayors have been the primary on that, but that's up to Counsel.
And that's what we just attended?
Yes, sir.
I would say that, that, I don't have a problem with that. I really don't. It's something you really wanna do, and I think you're, you know, on top of that. I could always go whenever you feel like there's an issue I should go for. I thought it was a very valuable thing for me to be there at the last meeting. Um, there may or may not be some things that come our way that were, I think, important that may be the mayor's see, but that doesn't, well, that's true. I can't show up if you're there.
Nope.
So, uh, I'd kinda like to have the mayor stay on that. Would, what, I, again, your input, I've only been to one meeting. How important is it that it's the mayor?
It's, um, you know, this is the, the economic development zone, and it's how, um, our TIP dollars are being spent, and it also gives a broader perspective on what, uh, Mr. Post is working on, you know, in, in North Brevard. Um, uh, I, I think the previous mayors have provided excellent input to the meetings, and I know, uh, Member Jordan was a member of that board previously, so you're very familiar with the interworkings of that board.
If, if you feel comfortable you wanna do it, then I have no problem.
I think, I, I think I do. I think, uh, and not even so much me, I just kinda think that, that the point person on that being the mayor might be a good idea. Um, I certainly think as a backup or something like that, I have no problem.
Yeah, I'm a backup now.
Well, you're very astute on that, um, clearly. Uh, I've, I've.
That's fine.
Been to your school. You're very good at what you do.
Yes, I am, but.
So, well, don't, no, don't say that. People, you lose points that way.
Well, I'm the backup now, so I, I'll just be.
So, I, I appreciate that. I think I wanna stay on that and stay on Parks and Rec, and I'm good after that. Uh, Member Stokoe, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Um, I was just going to say that I would appreciate being able to stay, serving as the Florida League of Cities and Space Coast League of Cities liaison. I really enjoy that role and would like to continue in that capacity.
I don't know how many, um, anybody else making a comment on that, but having gone and sub for Dr. Stokoe a time or two, she's very well-known and has tremendous networking that would take a long time for someone else to jump on, so I agree with that. Um, Vice Mayor Nelson?
I was gonna say, uh, I'm happy to stay on the EDC, Space Coast EDC. Uh, if you want, I will turn around and also take on the, um, Transportation Planning Authority. The TPO.
That's the one I say I would do.
So, so ma'am, you're currently the alternate on that?
Right.
So, what, what?
Oh, so we two primaries, yeah.
So, would make that, because there are two voting members, but we would definitely still need an alternate for that, um, position, because should one of you not be able to go, we definitely want us to vote there.
I would, if nobody else wants it, and, and, uh, Member Robinson, I'm not sure where you wanna go or what you wanna do, so before I even say that.
Well, I, I've learned.
Hit your button.
I've learned in making meetings and, and all of the, you know, the new kid on the block get everything when, when everything is, uh.
Well, I'm hoping not to do that.
When, when all of you have said and done, and, uh, all of the powers that play have done, we'll see what's left, and we'll go from there.
I, I see what you're saying, but at the same time, I like to, you know, this comes from.
I was just telling, uh, the legal cities, I don't have no problem being the alternate with that. Yeah. That's one of the things I, I, sorry, Mr. Mayor, that's one of the things I fail to do. Um, I can, Dr. Stokoe does a wonderful job with the League of Cities and Space Coast, um, so, uh, if Member Robinson wants to take the alternate for my two spots there, I don't have a problem with it.
Well.
Oops, sorry, writing that down.
If Member Robinson wants to do the, uh, Space Coast, Space Coast TPO, that would work, because that would give him a regular.
Oh, you mean as alternate?
And so, just be an alternate for everything.
Okay. That, that's, so you're gonna have three people on that, the steel or the mayor?
Yeah, so there's, there's two voting members on that board, and then we also need an alternate. So, um, my, my understanding is you, you wanted to move over to be the primary.
Well, I can remain as an alternate.
Okay, remain as an alternate, then have Member Robinson become the primary, so that would be, uh, Member Jordan and Member Robinson as the primary, and you as the alternate.
Right.
Okay. Does that work for you, Member Jordan?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Okay.
And then what I also heard was Member Robinson's going to replace Member Jordan as the alternate on the Florida League of Cities as well as the Space Coast League of Cities.
Yep. Okay. Where's that leave us? What do we have left? I think.
And I've got Mayor Diesel as the representative, non-voting for the North Brevard Economic Development Zone, and the Park and Rec. Member Nelson, correction, Vice Mayor Nelson remaining as the EDC's representative. You were the alternate.
Right, that's fine.
Mayor, okay. And then, Mr. Jordan, you're the alternate on the North Brevard Economic Development Zone.
Perfect.
Space Coast Transportation Planning is Member Robinson and Member Jordan, with Member Vice Mayor Nelson as the alternate. And the Space Coast and Florida League of Cities, the primary is Member Stokoe, and alternate is Member Robinson.
Well, you missed one, and that was on the Park and Rec, the alternate, it should be you, yeah. And we're good.
Park and Rec, I didn't, I'm sorry.
He's the alternate.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So I think I've got that with consensus of council. We don't.
Is there an alternate, another one?
Say again, sir?
I'm getting used to that. I was the alternate on the Florida League of Cities and?
Yes, sir, on both.
Space Coast.
And Space Coast.
Mayor, before you finalize, the clerk was wanting your attention.
Say, I'm sorry.
I think the clerk.
Clerk, have a card?
Yes, sir, and I apologize if it will be painful. We'll need to kind of re-cement what you just chose that felt like a game of Twister, so I need to, I need to go through the sequentially, if you don't mind.
Well, after the card, they can certainly do that. When they vote to approve it, they'll do that as part of the motion.
From Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I've seen this, the council go through this repeatedly, and my observations is different than yours. Like, I know that Joe's choosing some duties to do, and he doesn't know, and nobody knows maybe what it all involves, and intricacies, and time, and so forth. And what I see this as is something as a circus. It's a circus to take your time. Take your time away from what we really need to be concentrating on, what's going on in the city. I believe it's a serious flaw, and it's intentionally, it's intentionally directed to keep you so busy that you don't know what the heck the city manager's doing, and the city government's doing. That's what I see as happening. For example, I have, I have an ex over God. I have an ex over God for several reasons. One reason is because water flows downhill. In this city of Tidesville, they disobey the, for example, Stormwater Master Plan, FEMA regulations, and water flows downhill. That's God's law. You ignore it and deny it. So as far as I can see, is you're absolutely too busy. And it's a circus that you can change. You don't have to have him as a ringmaster directing you that you have to do all these things. This, we've got problems here that you need to address that aren't being addressed. For example, I call city council members, no one, not one council member will meet with me now and discuss these issues, finance, whatever it might be, none of it. So, and none of that, it's, none of my clients will do it. He won't talk to anybody, not one of them. And everything, everybody's okay, because it's Shyster City Manager. That's the way he operates.
Sir, could I have you not point that weapon at me?
It's not a weapon, it's a cane.
Please don't point that at me.
Man, don't do that.
I'm pointing at you right.
Please do not point that at me.
I'm not doing what you said.
Put that down.
You want my cane? Put my cane down. I put my cane down, so he feels threatened for my cane.
And you're not going to do it again, or you can be out of here. You know I'm not going to.
Okay, take me.
Let's go, let's go.
All right, take my time. Careful, man.
I apologize, Mayor, but I just don't want anybody pointing anything at me as.
I understand. Yeah, this is where you say, okay, where were we?
No, I think Joe Lynn wanted to go through the list.
I apologize. The Florida League of Cities, is that Member Stokoe, you know, lead? And then is it Mr., Member Robinson coming in?
Yes.
And then Space Coast League of Cities, Member Stokoe staying in? And Member Jordan staying in?
No.
No.
Okay.
Robinson.
Robinson, okay. Space Coast TPO, it will be Member Nelson?
Uh-uh.
And, okay, please guide me.
Okay.
Okay, here, I'll review them for you, okay? For Florida League of Cities and Space Coast League of Cities, it's the current member, Member Stokoe, and the alternate is Member Robinson. For the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization, it's Member Jordan and Member Robinson, with the alternate of Vice Mayor Nelson. For the North Brevard Commission on Park and Rec, it's Mayor Diesel with the alternate of Vice Mayor Nelson. For the Economic Development Commission of Florida Space Coast, it's Vice Mayor Nelson and Mayor Diesel. For the North of Art Economic Development Zone, it's Mayor Diesel and Member Jordan as the alternate.
Thank you so much.
Are we done with that task?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then we go by petitions and requests from the public, and then we go to mayor and council reports. In my case, the only real report I had, I kind of already gave. I got a chance to see the program by Laura Lee, and I probably have seen three of hers now, and they're all fascinating, outstanding. So with that, let's go to Member Jordan.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. One of the things I've got, and I've made it pretty well-known, I've got two more years left on council. And I certainly would like for us to think about one of the major projects that we have put on the back burner, which is a replacement of the city hall. When you look at all the cities in Brevard County, we've got the oldest building there is, and it's, we are trying to replace, or we fixed the elevator, and we're trying to do something with the bathrooms, and actually told the city manager, reminded me when I was in elementary school, the smell that I have when I go into the bathroom. So the building is old, and if one thing, you know, you can refurbish a building and make it look like new, this is a public facility that I think we should all be proud of. And if we keep pushing this can down the road, we will never have a design, we will never have anything in place to do something when we can do it. So if it's okay with council, I would ask that we ask the city manager and his staff if he would dust out some of the things that we looked at before and bring it back to us and see what we can do with it. And be very proactive about saying we're actually going to do something to make the city proud. That's my report.
And certainly, I agree. It's funny you say that, because today I was talking to somebody who was here today, one of my relatives, and talked about how this is a, you know, this was built the year we landed on the moon, you know, 1969, so I totally get that. I am not opposed to making a move and looking things over and dusting things off. I think that we'd be remiss if we didn't say we're very aware of the economic situation and what it's supposed to look like next year. But I don't think it hurts to move forward and get things ready for the right time, so I would endorse that. Is there a movement we make to do that? Is there a step we take to do that?
It's a rather involved process. We're doing right now an inventory of our current facilities, of where our employees are located, and how much space is required for that. We kind of put it on hold because of COVID. We were refocusing our efforts on that, but we can certainly begin that study again. We're doing it in-house.
Yeah, I think the term dusting off is a good way to look at it, but outside of that, Vice Mayor?
I would agree. At some point, we either need to look at refurbishing this building or looking for another building, but with the sea level rise, I'm thinking that maybe we seriously need to look at other locations. My concern would be, we've got COVID, so next year's not going to be a good year. And I really don't see the year after being a great year.
No.
So I would hate to put that burden back on the citizens quite yet. So that would be my two cents.
And I wanted to make sure we added that. I think that it's a win-win and not a wrong-wrong either way. I think that there's a motion, or not a motion, there's a thought, to let's dust things off and start thinking about this again instead of just not thinking about it, because it is what it is. The question that was asked me today at a gathering after this, you know, was do we have an office? You know, and this is something was talked about when we first came in here four years ago. And I can tell you that, you know, when you do the mayor thing, there's a little more going on, and I'd really like to have a little space where everything's over there and I can, you know, print this or print that. We don't have that. And I'm not saying that everybody else does, but I'm saying if we had a new facility, there's no place to put anybody on this council. There's no room. So we get that. We've got the council office over there, and we appreciate that. I'm just saying that I think that's a good idea to look at it. I'm also saying that we've got a situation this year, and it may even be worse next year, that we may have to hold on it. But I agree, dust it off and see what we got. Okay, anybody else?
And I think what we're looking at is a comprehensive government complex. As you know, our police department is probably going to get absorbed in a Phase Four of the Lockheed Martin Project. That, the police department is in fairly poor condition, poor shape. We're focusing right now on our public works facility. We're trying to make improvements out there. That's been our primary focus with the police station and this building. Perhaps adjoining and then taking, you know, our fire department headquarters is in a previous bank.
Right, yes, absolutely.
So bringing those departments together in a government complex, that's what, and to your point, ma'am, it's probably not a great location in the downtown anymore. This would be prime real estate for redevelopment, but we would definitely start looking for a larger government complex facility to be built.
And just because we've had this thrown at us before, I want to make sure that people realize that this isn't, oh, we have a new plan and we're ready to go. No, we're not. This is just, let's talk about it, let's look it over. You know, we've had parking garages thrown at us and civic centers thrown at us, meaning that we were going to do those. Just because you talk about it doesn't mean we're budgeting for this just yet. All right, so I appreciate that. Member Jordan, I think that's a great idea, great thought. Member Robinson, anything?
No, it's good to be a member.
Certainly, could I have you talking into the microphone so we can catch up?
Oh, it's good to be a part of the group and listen to all of the wonderful conversations and see how you guys make decisions. And see what input and help I can give you. It's good to be here.
I personally am extremely glad to have you here. I think the rest of the council is. Member Stokoe, you have anything you want to say?
No, I'm good.
All right, I'd kind of, in this part of it, and I know there's another thing I think you need to say, but I wanted to thank you both, city manager and city attorney, for making this morning's, and certainly Mr. Virginia and whoever else helped making this morning's ceremony very nice. As you know, I had an awful lot of family here, maybe more than I knew was coming, and it was outstanding, and it was, you guys helped create a memory that, you know, I can't get back. And so I thank you guys, and certainly anybody who's watching, not too many of my people are watching right now, I don't think, but I appreciate the family coming out here, and it was pretty special for me to have my wife be a part of that as well. So I thank you guys. You guys always, always, whatever it is you do, you make sure you do it right and with sincerity, and I appreciate that. Member Robinson, oh, your light's on, because we told you to turn the microphone on. Vice Mayor Nelson?
And I just want to say, everybody, please be safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Agree, definitely. Happy Thanksgiving and be safe. Won't tell you guys how to do it, but be safe. City manager?
Yes, sir. Just a couple items on my report, and I appreciate the comments, sir. We have a great team, as you know.
Awesome.
The staff works really hard to make events happen, and those fellows back in that booth worked really hard on that video, and we were able to give former Mayor Johnson a copy of that on the thumb drive.
That was pretty special, wasn't it?
He'll be able to keep that opportunity. First off, the evaluation of the CBGG funding request. We'd like to set a primary date for that special meeting. The dates proposed are February 2nd, February 16th, and February 18th at 5:30. So if I could get somebody to pick one of those days. What we've tried to do is, you know, your city council meeting's on the Tuesday, second Tuesday and fourth, so this is the free Tuesday in between those.
Could you possibly throw those dates out again?
Yes, sir. February 2nd, February 16th, or Thursday, correction, Thursday, February 18th. Those are the two Tuesdays that are free, and then the tertiary one is the February 18th. So I just need one date.
Counsel, I'll let you kind of throw some dates out at me.
Thursday's always a good day for me. You had one there for?
That would be Thursday, February 18th.
We good with that? Member, Member Stokoe?
Yes, I'm good with that. I would just, I normally work late on Thursdays, so I can switch it, so Tuesdays typically are already early because of council, but this far in advance, I'll be able to switch shifts, so that should be fine.
All right, let's look at February 18th, and what time was that again?
5:30, sir.
On the floor, or?
No, you'll be on the dais, and this will be a chance for those that are requesting CBG funds to present their, to council. You'll make no decisions at this meeting. This is just to receive the initial requests.
And if I'm not mistaken, it was maybe an hour?
It depends on how many applicants we had. I think last year we had three applicants.
Yeah, I don't think it was quite an hour. Okay, thank you. Next?
Next is, we're beginning our budget cycle already, so I know we just started one in October, but our strategic planning cycle, we, last year was facilitated by Kristin Bakke of Lead Brevard. She did an outstanding job. We will probably have to make some modifications due to COVID as we work through this, but her proposed free dates that she has opened are Saturday, February 6th, Saturday, February 20th, or Saturday, February 27th. And we traditionally do that between 9:00 and 12:00 that day, and it normally lasts all of that time. So if I could get you to spend the Saturday morning with us, we'll get you some coffee and donuts.
And a couple apples.
I would, I would say I'd want to stay away from the 20th, because that's right after the 18th special meeting. I'd kind of like to maybe go with the February 6th. But I don't, I mean, I'm not huge on anything. I'm clear, so you guys kind of tell me.
Can we go for the 27th?
I could do that.
Okay, so that'll be Saturday, February 27th, between 9:00 and noon. And then, as you recall, the second step of the process of the budget is we have a workshop where Ms. Bakke comes back and discusses with council and staff, and you guys determine your priorities for the year coming up. So that'll be another meeting, a special meeting, and the dates proposed there are Thursday, March 11th, Tuesday, March 16th, and Thursday, March 18th, all at 5:30 PM.
Say those again.
Yes, sir. March 11th, which is a Thursday, March 16th, which is a Tuesday, and March 18th, which
11, 16, 18?
11, 16, and 18, yes, sir.
Oh, we're allowed to have that many meetings that quick? That seems like a lot of work.
That's why we have one meeting in December, and we enjoy ourselves, because we get really busy January, February, March.
Yes, we do. Okay, that looks good. And these will all go onto the calendar from Ms. Virginia?
Yes, sir.
I'm good.
I need a date, sir.
Oh, I'll take the, again, I'll back out to the council. You tell me. We got two I-don't-cares, and, boy, that one's wide open then. I'm going to say yes, because I have no reason to say no.
Maybe we'll remember more of it.
I agree. So we'll go with, I'll go with March 11th, is that okay?
March 11th, okay? Okay, on to information items for your consideration. Staff's provided an update to you on low-intensity development. Second is the COVID CARES Act dollars that we've received, an obligated $210,000. It's a report on where the money was spent. And finally, this is really good news, is the Florida Department of Environmental Protection reviewed our BMAP, which is our Basin Management Action Plan, and currently, we are at the acceptable levels for 2030. So we're 10 years ahead of schedule. Very proud of staff for all that we've done to, and council, as you know, the lagoon has always been one of council's priorities and normally the top priority. So to be exceeding goals right now that are set for 2030, I think we're really out doing well. And we have a $9 million project that's underway for our sewer plant, which will also reap great rewards. for our sewer plant, which will also reap great rewards. So, um, kudos to council for supporting these initiatives, and, um, hopefully our neighbors surrounding us will, will.
Yeah, with that, I want to interject it. One of my little seminars, and I won't put a name to that one, uh, I did hear, and it's been kind of what it's been like since it started, we up here are ahead of our neighbors to the south, and we continue to do so. So, that's awful exciting news to what you, is that, uh, 10 years ahead?
10 years ahead of schedule, yes, sir.
That is awesome.
And we're not letting up. We're gonna continue to, um, use the, uh, penny cent sales tax, and we already are starting to get, uh, baffle boxes and other designs, uh, to, we'll, we'll be coming towards you. But, you know, the, the big one, the $9 million project, we would have, it would have taken us years to get to that. So, we're really happy that that's gonna remove nutrients from our, uh.
Very good.
Subject to your questions?
Oops, subject to your questions. Uh, from staff, we do wish you all a safe and, and, uh, relaxing, uh, Thanksgiving holiday weekend, and we will see you, um, for your one meeting on December 8th.
City attorney? Well, then, any, anybody else as we go through? Member Robinson?
Yes, sir. I want to thank, um, city manager for taking it easy on me today and setting up an easy schedule.
You can handle it.
And I know all of you, uh, old timers, enjoy the easy schedule.
Do you hear what he just called us? Member Jordan? All right, and I'd like to just conclude then, um, as we go into, this is my first official meeting, and I'm extremely excited about the council we have. Uh, clearly, uh, three of the members outside of myself I've already worked with, and, and I think you guys know how I feel about you. And then to add Member Robinson, I'm, as you know, I mean, again, I hope there's nothing I can say you guys don't already know about how I feel about you. And so, I'm extremely excited about that. And I'm gonna kind of throw it out there now in the very first meeting, and I've already kind of started doing this, and city manager saw how it works when I spoke at the Rotary meeting the other day. If there's a slogan I want to get out there, it's, it's, "We are Titusville." We are Titusville, kind of like it was first heard, first at Penn State University, "We are Penn State." But we are Titusville. And what I mean by that is, we are no longer and have not been for a long time, the city east of Orlando, or the city north of Melbourne. We are Titusville. Now, I would be willing to say all the people sitting up there and out there can say that with pride. We are Titusville. What we have to do is work on some of those people that when they say, "Where are you from?" "I'm just from Titusville." That always bothered me, and you can relate to this. That always bothered me when I was working at Titusville High School, and people would say, "Oh, I'm just going to BCC," or later on, "I'm just going to EFSC." I'd say, "What do you mean, you're just going to EFSC? That's a big deal." So, I say, "What do you mean, you're, we're just from Titusville?" You're from Titusville. We are Titusville. And I think if there's something you can do from, from the position of mayor, because I think it's more limited than people think, I think that you can kind of get a spirit or, or a, a, a vision out there. And if you can't look down US 1 now compared to 2008 and say, "We are Titusville," then you're missing it. And I think, again, this is, this is the choir I'm preaching to here, but the more we can do that, and the more we can call people out, in any meeting I go to, I'm gonna end it with, "We are Titusville," and give the whole talk about, "We're not just the city east of Orlando. We're not just the city north of Melbourne. We are Titusville." And we got an awful lot to offer here. So, with that, adjourned.